Today's Board of Trustees meeting on April 24th. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start first with public comment. If anyone would like to come on up to the podium.
Mary Alice Ladue, Bloomfield Township President. This board must rethink the fixed costs and stop price gouging residents with large pipes. This is the wrong measure of potential water use. Potential water use is based on a number of people in a household, their work from home status, the frequency that they choose to wash, and the frequency that they choose to water their lawns. None of this has to do with pipe size. People with a 5/8 inch pipe can use more water than me with a 1.5 inch pipe. Most of the people in homes with larger pipes are empty nesters who are not using high volumes of water. Higher cost we put on people who use significant amounts of water in the summer when it is more expensive. If we could reduce demand during this timing, it would help all residents. Homeowners should pay the same fixed rates with adjustments based on usage alone. Why are you not looking at common fixed rates with higher variable rates for usage? This would be a thorough system. DTE has moved to dynamic pricing to encourage behavior changes and to reduce costs. Why isn't this board looking to do the same? Okay, please rethink the fixed and variable costs of water in the township. Okay, fixed should be the same, and it should be variable on usage. I should not subsidize all of you trustees, okay? And I gave you in an email this weekend why I am paying for half the units the same price that some of you are paying with double the units. That's wrong, okay? It's just totally wrong. If the cost is so much higher during the peak summer months, please increase water delivery to those people who choose to water their lawns. Do not penalize everyone, especially those of us who conserve water. This is supply and demand pricing 101. All right, reduce usage when it is more expensive. Why isn't this board rethinking this? Noah and this board have been sold a bill of goods by Ref Telus, the consulting firm. And to make matters worse, there have been few questions by this board on alternative solutions that would make sense for all residents. Okay, just an example. Martin Brooks' bill for 15 units was $330. My bill for eight units was $328. Val Murray's bill for 12 units was $278. My bill for six units was $294. Michael Showstack's bill for eight units was $242. My bill for four units was $293. This is not fair and equitable pricing, okay? You've got to address this. You have to adjust the extra $250 that you're asking me and 2,200 other households to pay. It has to stop. You have to make it more equitable and put the bonus on usage. That's where the cost spikes are. That's what we're getting charged on, and that's what you have to charge. Not all of us who are paying high fixed rates to subsidize you.
Anybody else want to come on up? Sir, can you come on up to there if you want to talk?
No.
Sorry, if you cannot talk, the public comment, anybody who wants to, please come up. This is aired on TV so that they can hear what everyone says. You have to go up to the mic. Sir, public comment, you can tell us whatever you'd like. It's addressed to the board.
I just want to make sure I heard what she said, okay?
Okay. If you want to talk after, but sir, I apologize, but this is...
She said, she said that she's paying more...
Identify yourself, please.
What's your name?
It's James Michael Van.
Okay.
I have had the...
James, can you talk into the mic? Because again, this is going to a lot of people.
I've had the distinction of living in a lot of different places because my company thought that I had value in doing that. Anyway, the long and the short of it is that I find that if what I heard is true, how, if you're using more, are you paying less than what she is, who's using less? Now, that's what I heard her say. That's why I wanted to make sure that that's what it was. Is that what she said? Is that what you guys heard? Is that what everybody here heard? Yeah? I see a lot of...
Sir, the process is you have three minutes to make whatever public comments you want.
The comments are, what kind of BS is that?
But it's not dialogue.
Sir, but what happens is then you'll hear how, in order to do usage, you'll hear all of that. If you haven't been to any of the study sessions, it's probably hard. But you'll hear from Noah later how, once we get to the meters that give usage, we can do usage. But because of a lawsuit that came against us, we are only allowed to actually charge people based on national standards, which unfortunately is meter, sorry, your pipe size. We are working towards usage, which is why we're going to be paying for these meter upgrades so that you would just pay.
We're the only community in America that doesn't charge for usage.
Actually, we're not. We're going to be one of the few in our area that will charge for usage. And it's going to be, that's why we luckily won the lawsuit, whereas others lost. Okay, Mark.
My name is Mark Intakley. I'm a township delegate in Precinct 3. The township has been increasing rates based on two issues. One regarding pipe size, and second one regarding second meters. They wanted to increase the rate on the second meter for irrigation. And now they want to spend $11 million without any potential savings being provided to the township. Now, that $11 million from the September 12, 2022 Board of Trustee packet for the new meters, that's where I'm getting the number, there's no savings. Nothing's been identified. And we see that other communities like Commerce Township purchased a water storage system. They built it. They saved 30% on wholesale water costs, 1.5 million in annual savings. I called them this past week to confirm that every year for the past five years. Regarding estimates for the water rate, this is the third year in a row that the township has overestimated water and sewer expenses to support increasing water and sewer rates. From the April 1, 2020 through March 31, 2023, this resulted in an $11 million increase in water and sewer reserves. This year, during the April 10, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting, trustee leading the Director of Public Works estimated water and sewer expenses for the end of the year at $26.7 million. For the year ending March 31, 2023, that was two weeks ago. In today's board packet, the township released quarterly financials, statements showing water and sewer has about $24.1 billion expenses ending March 31. That's a $2.6 million variation. This includes depreciation but not capital projects. When we look, when we look at the numbers, he wants to spend $37 million in water and sewer expenses next year. A significant portion is tied to the new meter project. So if we remove the rate-funded capital expenditures from that number, we end up at $26.6 million. This is about $2.5 million more expenses than the prior year. And the prior year also included $2.4 million in depreciation. I think we're being overcharged. Your estimates are off, and it's from your own data. Your own data from your own board meeting packets. And it's there. If my analysis is wrong, you can explain why. It's also referenced in the audited financials. I've been saying the funded, the funded reserves have been going up, and members on the board have put in writing that that assessment has been wrong in the past. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up?
David Thomas, Bloomfield Hills, our Bloomfield Township president. When we had the SAD election back about four years ago, every five of the members up here on the dais already were in total support of it. Two of the members up here weren't elected at the time, and Val was the only person on the dais that actually worked on the SAD, to stop the SAD. Everybody here is interested by a majority of increasing the burden rate on the citizens. The water rates are too high. They're just too high. And when you look around the township, we've got the road commission, we've got potholes in the road. What's the road department doing for us? I don't see anybody out here controlling costs, trying to do a cost-benefit analysis on anything before it's put forward. I don't understand the accounting. When Noah stood up here and said that, oh, we had all these projects deferred from COVID, but now we're going to pay for them out of this year's budget. Those money should have been allocated at the time when those programs are going to happen, and they should have been carried over as a reserve fund for those programs until those programs are completed. I don't understand this type of accounting. If you did that in the commercial world, you'd be looking at tax penalties. You'd be looking at fines and possibly jail time. That's, you can't do that when you appropriate funds, especially in something like a public corporation or a government entity. Well, some funds are set aside for that. They are supposed to stay with that. It should be a carryover. So I don't understand the accounting that's going on right now either. And you just, it seems to be, you know, when we got the $4 million COVID extra money, the only, the only look is how we can spend it on bettering the township facilities and for the employees. Nothing about even looking at, can we make a nicer park someplace for the kids, improve the soccer fields and that there over there at Fox Hills, which are a disaster. I mean, there's tons of ways that money could have been spent to improve the environment for the citizens as a whole, rather than just focused internally on township employees and facilities. So it just seems to be that there's a lack of concern for what's happening to the constituents here. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll get back to some of these answers when we get to the water sewer part. So next we have approving the board minutes of April 10. We've all had a chance to look them over unless there's any changes or suggestions. I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor. Aye. All opposed. That does pass. Next, we'll consider approval of the water and sewer rate resolutions presented by Noah Mahowski. Just a quick overview, unfortunately, even though you fight a water and sewer lawsuit from some misinformation out there, it costs $1.4 million to fight these same arguments, which were proven incorrect. Sadly, it costs all of the rate payers because that's who pays for it. So as we hear these same things coming back, some who are upset about the size of water meter, that's also something we agree with, which is why we're going to usage. You do have to have specific meters that allow for that, which is why we are spending money. Otherwise, you have to have, I think we needed, what, 19 towers plus the storage facilities were at $50 million approximately, 40 to 50 million by the time you paid for the 19 towers. You paid, and then we looked into storage, underground storage. We didn't have land for it and all that. So those were much more expensive. That would be eminent domain on some people's properties. Those are obviously not decisions we would ever make. So we went with the little bit quicker option as well as less expensive option of these new meters, which will allow us to go to an actual usage base. Another thing that you hear a lot, which unfortunately is kind of the crux of it, is not understanding the accounting and the analysis. That's why a lot of us went to school for government accounting. It's very different, and it can be confusing. We do have a reserve where money that's not spent does go into our capital fund reserve that is kept specifically in earmarks, so it is going to move back in when those are available. So we actually do that. That's why our auditors have given us the top ratings they've ever given in the last two sessions. Again, we also have some people who are frustrated, and that's why we're all frustrated as well. That's why we're trying to fix this. But we have proven that these are incorrect statements. It costs $1.4 million. And we will be going towards the usage. So I know some people want us to get to usage, but then they're upset about the cellphone technology needed. But that is what needs to go on those meters to get to usage, which is the $11 million project, which will save us the money, and nobody will have their land taken from them for eminent domain for storage tanks. The schools don't have to give us their land. That's why we also won't be able to use Fox Hills and other school properties. So just to get that all out there again, we've all gone to the Supreme Court on the water and sewer. We have to follow national standards until we get to these new meters. Sorry, it's not all new meters. It's the upgrade piece on the meter, which also be safer because right now we have the radio technology, which is what DT just went to. We're going to the next step, which is a lot safer for people. It's the cellphone technology. So I just want to get that out there because we hear it often, and I'm sure with campaign seasons coming, we'll hear it again. But these are the things that we already fought. It gets expensive to keep fighting the same thing, and as a resident of 51 years, it's really frustrating to see the same things coming back. But Noah, can you help explain to us all of the water and sewer rate information because there were some questions? Thank you, Noah.
Okay, welcome. Good to be here. Just recapping the multiple public meetings we've had on this topic and the decisions and recommendations by staff going forward. First recommendation is no fixed fees added to the secondary meter program. Also, you're going to see in the rates that were included in your packet, the reflective increases of 2.5% in water rates and 3.5% increase in sewer rates. And then just a note on the surplus cash, that we are going to be taking $4.4 million of that surplus reserve funding to fund our emergency sewer projects. And then the first year of three, so it's a $9 million project, but the first year of $3 million to be funded out of the reserves for the meter program as well.
And Noah, although we're increasing 2.5 and 3.5, what were the increases that actually came from GLEWA? We are actually helping subsidize some of that to keep rate increases lower.
Yeah, SACWA's rate increase. It was higher than that. I don't know what it was offhand.
It was in the last meeting. I just, it doesn't sound like everybody heard that.
4.8% from SACWA, and I do know WRC was 5.8 to 7.8% increase.
So the water rates did go up even higher to us, but we're helping keep those lower by adding some of the...
Correct.
Yep. Just want to get that out there.
Yep, and you know, like, again, COVID decreased usage or increased usage because of the extreme drought we had last year. That resulted in this healthier reserve fund balance, and then that is why we are now able to put that reserve both into the variable rates and fund these projects. Just an illustration of that, and this was from our last meeting as well. These are the actual rates, and it shows the current rate along with the proposed rate. And then you have copies of the resolutions within your packet. So my recommendation is we approve the resolutions as included in the board packet.
I know we've sat through about a year and a half worth of, or a year or so of this. Does anyone have any questions, comments, anything for Noah? And then just also make note, there are no extra charges for secondary meter, because that was also mentioned again. That is not a separate rate that's being introduced.
Whether it's, whether it's current or forward, and of course, no sewer charges.
Right, and no extra sewer charges. Yeah, so there's no secondary meter on water and no secondary meter on the sewer.
Yeah, that's the whole point of the secondary meter program is to get outside of the sewer costs. So that's certainly the entire reason for the program.
Correct. So the program is maintaining, but we are not charging that fee to that program. So just want to also, because it sounds like that still might be out there with some misconceptions.
Yeah, so just to clarify, sewage is not going to be charged on secondary water meter. I did get a question from...
Hey Stephanie, can you move your mic down?
Oh, sure. I did get a question from a resident asking about if, in the meter replacement program, if they'll be charged for their secondary meter to replace that as well.
No, just like we lose the cost of the meter from years 15 to years 20 in our normal meters, it actually, it makes business sense to replace those meters as well because the amount they slow down will result in lost revenue over that five-year time period. So it still makes business sense, even if we don't have the fixed fees on those units to change the meters so that we accurately reflect the water going in.
At the cost of the system, not the people.
Right. Yep, that will be funded just like the other meters in the system.
Correct.
So you got to buy your first meter when you're constructing the house, and then they're replaced by the system after that fact.
Yeah, one other clarification. You know, if somebody has a newer meter, we're not replacing that.
Correct. So only meters that meet the parameters of 15 years of age or older. If it doesn't meet that parameter, it'll be on the list for future years, but we'll replace the sending unit off the meter, and that will allow us to collect the data.
Which is where? That's outside the house?
That's right. That's a meter unit outside the home.
So somebody, so anybody who has a meter, if I understand you, anyone who has a meter that's less than 15 years old will not need to let anyone into their house.
There's 15 years old or a million gallons, so there's a usage component, right? If you have a, the parts wear out because of usage, so you have a quantity component too. So if you're a really, really high user, have over a million gallons in, let's say, five years or something, we'll be coming to replace that meter as well because the wear down of the parts has occurred. So it's a double-pronged kind of policy.
But somebody who either has new construction or...
Unless you're an abnormal case.
Renovated and had a new meter put in, they, we don't need to replace their meter. We're just replacing the transmitting.
Correct, the sending unit, the technology there, yep.
And then can you better explain that technology? Because some people think that it's the same as what DT is just getting to, which is the radio frequency, which is what we have right now, which is that older technology that can't give us what we really need and is also connected to some things that people have stated that they feel it affects like the wildlife, it affects other things. Whereas this that we're switching to is cellphone technology. So everybody, the cell phone's already used to this technology, but it's not like a cellphone that's on all the time. These send tiny packets, how many times a day?
Four times a day. It'll send for milliseconds. It will send a data packet to the receiver, and that will be received, again, milliseconds to transfer that data through a, four times a day through a call. So it's not connected to the system 24/7 like radio reads are sending a signal at this time.
Right, like radio is the constant, constant sending, having our cell phones on is constant.
So I will say, you know, all the studies indicate it's in the non-ionizing wavelength of, you know, it's not up in the ionizing like microwaves or X-rays, that type of stuff.
Right, so this will be a safer, more familiar technology that anybody who has one of these is used to. And then we'll go ahead. Brian, you had a question?
So just to clarify, and I think we've been through this, but I just want to, kind of putting this all together, that means that if the frequency is four times a day, then that's going to do a number of, a couple of things at a minimum. It's going to not only deter, show the amount of use, but when it's used. So that if we're getting into like DTE, I just received at home, it talked about that during peak times from 3:00 to 7:00, four hours a day, if you use your electricity during those times, then you're going to be charged a peak time. For the other 20 hours a day, you're off-peak time. And I would imagine that it's not just the volume that we're, that's being used. It was mentioned that certain people use certain volumes. It's really when you use that volume in terms of what the, in terms of what really drives the extra expense of getting that water.
So early morning fill and early morning irrigation pushes our rate higher for everyone because that is our peak.
Early morning meaning like when people are taking showers, like 7:00 to 8:00. But if you're watering your lawn at 2:00 in the morning, it goes on for four hours from 2:00 to 6:00. I mean, I'm just, whatever...
In one of the peak hours, I would suggest like midnight to 4:00. So you're missing all the peak at that point.
So we'll have to determine what peak is, and we'll get guidance from that. The other thing that it's going to provide us is the option if we want to change the frequency of billing, and that'll be something that this board will do clearly. Right now, we're doing it quarterly. If the board determines that it wants to do that at some point, less than quarterly, whether it's monthly, or whether it's semi-annually, or whether it's daily, it would have the ability to do that. I'm not suggesting any of those. I'm just saying.
All right, or once a year, or whatever.
Whatever it is, but it clearly, it clearly could be monthly like a lot of other communities do. The other thing that it's going to provide us, which really importantly is any kind of leakage or abnormal usage. And at this point, I can tell you, because I get a lot of the calls, being the treasurer, invoicing people, that they don't realize that there's an occurrence until, you know, sometimes the end of the quarter. And at that point, they see a bill where they're typically at 10 units, and they could be at 30 units. And literally, I remember one where someone had their grand shower was over, playing in the basement. They put the hose from the washer into the drain, and the water was just running, and no one knew it, and it wasn't leaking anywhere. And all of a sudden, they had a big bill, and they're looking for relief. And the situation with these meters going and sending, we would know daily if there's increased usage. We would be able to alert the, either alert the resident and/or, I guess, the resident might have the ability to monitor it themselves.
Yep, portal will allow that, and that's kind of the customer service benefit secondarily of the kind of benefits to the system. But yeah, leak detection is a bust, and you know, all those factors you mentioned are benefits.
So putting that all together, though, we really can't do any of that until we get to these meters that are smarter than our smart meters now.
Well, we just need the data, right? So right now, we're not collecting it, so it's the mechanism of collecting that.
And it's going to take a few years to be able to convert all the meters to be able to get to that point. And that's really what we're talking about now, and paying the first wave of that in the, from the reserve fund. So I get what you're saying, and it makes sense, but I just wanted to kind of put it all together so it's one package that people understand where we're at and where we're going to. One other point is, we only start, we only started charging fixed costs, which is what people are concerned about, whether we call it a meter equivalent unit or ready to serve. We only really started charging that when we started receiving fixed charges from our providers, being South Oakland County Water and also Water Resources.
WRC, yep. So all of WRC's costs are fixed, and then SACWA, a large percentage of their variable is fixed, or their rate is fixed. Again, recognizing the fact that if you don't deliver any water whatsoever, there's costs to run the system here.
And so the goal is to get more to a demand base where people can have more control over it, but we've got to get the meters in that scenario on one hand. On the other hand, there are always our fixed costs to the system, and I think invariably there's going to be a fixed charge. It's just a question of what it is. We've, we've gone from where we were to a 26% chart, from a 26% charge, now to a 21% charge. That 21% was then changed from the ready to serve to meter equivalent. And so there's different dynamics, and I, you know, no policy typically is ever perfect. We're trying to be able to right-size it, to be able to get to the concerns of the community, and this was a way to do it, was number one, reduce it. And we did reduce it by about 20% from 26% to 21%, putting then more costs onto the variable side. You know, time will tell what that right number is, but I think really a large part of this is getting to dynamic charging, which we're not going to be able to get to for a few years.
Yeah, we need to know where those cutoffs and those levels are in the latter per se before we make that leap.
Okay.
So Noah, just to clarify, in terms of the pipe size, that has to do with demand, not that you run, you know, two units a month or 20 units a month, but the larger the pipe means the demand, the potential for demand, which the system...
Is sized for.
Is sized for, right. And that, you know, if everybody starts running it, even if it's only once a day, that's still demanding on the system, the wear and tear, whatever. And so that is why the pipe size is one of these, is the standard for charging. Is that correct?
Yep, yep. And you know, all those things from construction, replacement of pipes, all those things, the capacity and the overall potential drives the design of the system. Even when you think about fire flows, something you may never use, but the system has to be planned to meet government standards to, you know, to provide that fire standard.
So when we get to these other meters, that would go away. Because again, that's, that's because you only have certain ways that are legally allowed, and that's one that we are legally capable of doing, but that doesn't mean that's what we want to continue doing, which is why we're trying to go to the usage base. Because you could have somebody, to one of our residents' point, that uses more, that should be paying more than the person who has a bigger pipe that isn't using more. But we have to use that now because that's nationally acceptable, and it keeps you out of trouble when you're in a court.
And how we got to this rate structure was because we were charging everybody the same, no matter what, which wasn't a fair or equivalent way to do it. So it seems like any which way we do it, it's not a perfect system. It's going to benefit some more than others. This was trying to make it more equitable, but ultimately, replacing those sending units, which I know there's been some pushback on, some of the residents are concerned about that cost, but that is the end goal, to being able to make this as fair as possible, which is...
It gives people... I'm so sorry, but public comment is over. But it gives people the chance to... It gives people a chance to actually make it their choice. Thank you, Mr. Van. It's always great to see you. So this is a chance, when we get to those smart meters with that meter, with the cellphone technology, we will be able to put it on ourselves to say, I'm not using as much. I'm not going to have to pay as much. Or to your point of different hours, if we can get to a point where for those secondary meters and others that use a lot, they can even have control of when they're doing it to save even more. So it gets it to the point where we have control of our own destiny and that's the way to get there. But until we get there, we have to use national standards.
The only thing I want to add to that is, I mean, yes, Rep. Tellus, you know, gave us advice. It's a national standard. Recently, Noah shared with us the, you know, sort of the National Water Standard Book. It's like this thick. It's huge. And I spent some time going through it and looking at the references in there to meter or size rates. And, you know, they describe what we're doing here essentially as one method that's a national standard. I also then spent some time and looked at our community around here and no water system is like another one. But of the 16 I looked at, more than half of them also charged a meter size, you know, based charge. So it's not only is this, is the meter rate a national standard, it's consistent with the majority of the local community that charged also a variable rate based on meter size or pipe size. And I think we're going in the right direction. I mean, we do want a program that is much better at providing our users with data about their usage and then pricing based on that usage. Sooner we get there, the better.
Indeed. Amen.
Okay. With that said, and I agree with you 100%. That's pretty much what I was going to say. We've been working towards that and the study sessions and the meetings for the past year and a half, there's been considerable discussion from the board and from our consultants about this. And certainly, I know everybody on the board wants to move in that direction, but we need the technology and the data to get there. So we're moving in the right direction. And with that said, unless there's any other discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented for the 23, 24 water and sewer rates.
Which resolution?
It's in the pack.
Would your motion for both resolutions or just one of them?
Both.
Both of them?
If I can do both.
Is there any other discussion or if not?
Well, I just... So I just have a few comments, but I mean, we can second the motion and then have discussion.
Support the motion.
Okay. So motion by Neil and support by Brian?
Yes. So I just want to make a few comments for residents who maybe were not around during the water study and, you know, as trustee Barnett indicated, this is something we've been kind of doing for the last year and a half. And certainly, we've heard from residents that they're not happy with what we've come up with at this stage. And obviously, we'd like to make everybody happy and, you know, we're not there yet. But what I would just sort of like to add is when this... First, this all started, obviously, the township was sued. They said, you're not using a national standard to charge your water rate. It went all the way to the Supreme Court here in Michigan and the court determined that what Bloomfield Township was doing was legal as far as setting water rates. But then the township said, okay, maybe it's not so equitable. Let's go back and sort of redo this and see if we can get it to be a bit more equitable. And that's how we came up with this meter equivalent standard. And we've hear from people that we don't think it's equitable. You have people using more water and they're somehow being charged less. So clearly, it's something that we still have to work on. But just one thing, and I don't know if it's really, you know, maybe the elephant in the room, but just kind of one thing that I'd like to talk about for a second, if the board and all of you will indulge me. So when we did the water rate study, we had a list of values that the consultants asked us to look at and they said, rank your values. What's the most important to you? So one of the values was essential use affordability, meaning for lower income people that they be able to have the requisite amount of money necessary to pay for their water bill for essential use, like, you know, showering and drinking water. You had cost of service, right? Everybody wants to see that cost of service lower. So that's a very high value as far as the township and residents are concerned. Rate stability and minimization of customer impacts. Similarly, people when they're budgeting, they want to know, this is, you know, I can budget that my water bill is going to be roughly this amount. We charge it quarterly. So sometimes that can be easier for people when they are doing their budget to know what to have an idea of what that cost will be. So having a stable rate was also important to members of the community. Revenue stability. So this goes to running our water system. We have pipes. We have sewer system that we have to maintain. So we have to ensure that we have enough revenue coming in to be able to maintain that system. And then we had simple to understand and implement. So clearly, that's an important value. We want people to understand what it is that they're paying for and how they're being charged for that. And then you have finally, usage-based billing, which at the time, I don't know was necessarily valued so high. But as we've switched to this meter equivalent unit, we're seeing that that is actually something that the township residents want to see a higher usage base. So one thing that sort of dawned on me, I am a first-generation American. My family came here from Lebanon. And I was in Lebanon earlier this month. And while I was there, where I was staying, the water ran out. I went to go take a shower. I turned on the faucet. There was no water. When the water finally came back on, I turned it on and it was brown. I had to run it for a few minutes until the clear water came through. And just one other quick story about that. I had a cousin from Lebanon visit me in 2019 and she grew up in Lebanon and in Europe where if you've traveled outside of the country, you know, when you go to a restaurant, you have to order water. They bring you a bottle of water and you're charged for it. So in 2019, when my cousin was here visiting me, I remember her making a comment about the restaurants and how they give all this free water. You have free water, you go into the restaurant, you get free water. Wow, this is, you know, such a luxury. And at the time, I really didn't think much of it. But now, sort of in dealing with all this and thinking about this water system that we have and the cost of that water system, one of the values that, you know, we didn't have when talking to the consultants is the value of having clean water on demand. Okay? So as we all know, there's no such thing as a free lunch and there's certainly no such thing as free water either. So when we talk about Bloomfield Township and we talk about our water system, we... And we don't even have to look at Lebanon, right? We can look just here in our home state at Flint, at Benton Harbor, the issues that Highland Park is having now paying for their water system. So it's not far-fetched to think that here in the United States, there are communities who A, don't have clean water and B, don't have the funds to run a system to be able to give clean water to their community. And, you know, one thing that I would like to assure and, you know, hopefully I can fulfill this promise, is that as long as I sit on this board, Bloomfield Township residents will have clean water coming from their faucet. And I've come to understand through my time as trustee and my personal experiences, that there is a price to having that clean water. And, you know, there's a Benjamin Franklin quote. He says, "We know the worth of water when the well is dry." Here in Bloomfield Township, our well is not dry and hopefully it will never become dry. But in order to ensure that, we have to ensure that we are supplementing our system, that we have the revenue to keep the system stable for our township residents. So certainly, it's not perfect. We're not necessarily where we want to be. But I just wanted to share that to remind residents of the fact that we live in an older community. Our system is aging. Part of a lot of the problems that we're seeing in our country now are a lack of investments in infrastructure. We're lucky to have a director of our water department who understands the importance of maintaining that system. And in part of maintaining it, we have to pass that cost along to residents. And my hope is that residents can be patient as we try to sort this out and get to a more fair and equitable usage-based billing. And, you know, just remember that there is no such thing as free water and certainly, we never want our wells in Bloomfield Township to dry up. So thank you.
I'll say.
Yeah. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Is everyone comfortable voting on these as a package motion or would... Is anybody prefer that we split them out before we vote, just to make sure? Everyone's okay with it being two? Okay. Then we have a motion by trustee Barnett, support by treasurer Keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass. Thank you, Noah.
Very much.
Thanks, Noah.
Thanks, Noah.
All right. So next, we have presentation of the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA survey results. And we have Carrie here with us today, Carrie LaZant. Again, this is something we've been working on, doing multiple study sessions on. So we did a survey and Carrie's here to discuss it.
Great. Hello. Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Sounds good. So I just want to say that this is the first survey we've done. So not only did we learn about ARPA and what the residents want, we also learned about managing a survey. So this is something that I think that, you know, we'll continue to tweak it going forward in the future. But when it says resident-only survey results for ARPA funds, we did our best to really identify residents. But in order to do that, so that it was, would actually be only residents that would respond to the survey, would have been probably prohibitively expensive. So what we did as a way around that is we sent the survey to our email list so that at least we knew who was getting the survey. And those are, I would say, our most engaged citizens that are on that email list. And that list is 4,800 right now and growing. And so we did it that way instead of putting the link to answer the survey on Facebook or other social media. So we did have that narrow, more narrow group. And I'll also say that I don't believe this couple are actual...
That's what Martin just asked.
I don't believe they are actual township residents. I believe that's a stock photo. And in the future, I would hope that we would have actual residents because most of the pictures that you will see in the presentation are actually from Bloomfield Township. And we're continuing to work on that as my team has, is now complete and we have photographers on staff as well. So the survey overview, the distribution, the survey link was distributed through the e-newsletter and designed for participants for residents only. We can only ask that they not participate if they're residents. We can't, there's not really a way to guarantee that. The survey ran March 2nd through March 17th. So it was in three e-news. The e-news comes out on Thursday and in each of those e-news, there was a link to answer that survey. The choices, seven spending options were given and residents were asked to rank the options from one highest priority to seven lowest priority. And those seven opt, those seven choices were determined by how the department heads brought forth projects that they wanted to see funded and then they were narrowed down by the trustees. The responses, we received 409 submissions. And at the bottom there, it says, "Some email accounts did submit multiple surveys which could be attributed to spouses, household members, sharing an account. One email did submit 40 surveys, but they did not submit the same rankings that could shift the outcome of the results." So I'll say, this is one of the things that I think that we're, our learning is on because I believe what happened, you know, I just, I've been thinking about those 40 responses over and over and I, and they were so different. It wasn't like the 40 responses were all the same responses. They were a variety. They answered all different things. So I believe what happened in the tool that we used is that the person who received it, because we can see that the person, we can see that one email had 40 responses attributed to it. And I believe what happened is that the email, that person forwarded their email to a group and then anybody that clicked from that group was, it went back to their email, to that one email. So those 40 responses are still within the results.
That's funny, maybe like a homeowners group or something.
Exactly. Right. So there are no big surprises in here. But, and I think that, you know, I was talking to Jason, who's our finance, had finance. He is looking for the quantitative data. He's like, what are you going to tell them? And I'm really more of a qualitative person. So I look at the other things that the survey tells us that leads to the other questions like, how might we communicate in a better way so that if people are not understanding maybe even what the ARPA survey was, maybe that's something that we can continue to educate people on. And if they're asking questions about certain things, then we can, you know, dive into answering those questions. It's like another, the whole survey is another opportunity for us to have a dialogue with our residents. So here are the rankings of the seven items. Disaster recovery was the top at 27%. And then if you look at the fire and police, those are 23 and 17% respectively. But if you kind of combine public safety, that becomes 40%. So is it really more or less than disaster recovery? I don't know. But this is just another, like a pie chart so that we can see how things are distributed. I'm not going to read everything to you, but it's just another visual way of looking at the way things, you know, what kind of learner are you? All right. So moving on, the needs analysis and development options, these were the seven choices. So this is actually what, on the left is what was written as part of the question. I will not read that to you again. But this was the first, this was the top ranked. Average rank was 2.8, 23.23% of respondents ranked this number one and fire station number three. And this was also the least costly of all of the options, too. So I don't know if that was one of the reasons that it ended up at the top, but this is just not for the actual redevelopment. It's for the architectural design to take place. This was an actual photo. This is our actual dispatcher, someone that works for us. The police station remodel operations locker rooms and dispatch, estimated $65,000, similar to the architectural design needed in the fire department. And the average rank was 3.2. Strengthen disaster recovery and continuity in government, estimated $400,000. Average rank was 3.2, same as the prior. And 27% of respondents ranked this number one. This was the top ranked choice among residents who responded, among responders who said they were residents, maybe a better way of phrasing that. Records management structure, average rank was 4.1. Campus security improvements, improving video surveillance, surveillance, surveillance. Replace existing outdated onsite phone system. And this was broken down into two options. Of course, all this information is available in the packet if anybody wants to take a look and read it more thoroughly. Upgrades for town hall. Was it the very bottom really? 2.4 respondents ranked this number one. Average rank was 5.8. And so, a little more interesting, we did receive 122 written comments. Common responses were related to the importance of record management. May sound boring, but it's important goal, one that will likely never receive funding via millage, a great opportunity that will pay off for many years. Police, fire and disaster recovery. Police and fire received a lot of kudos and shout-outs and people really are always interested in funding those things. I rated disaster recovery as number one. As an engineer who has studied and published on climate change, I believe that the only way to survive climate change is to prepare our buildings, infrastructure and disaster recovery now. A summary, updating facilities for public safety. That was kind of the combined, really 40%. Increasing disaster recovery efforts, which was the ranked number, the highest, and updating digitizing records management. Additional feedback, comments that urge us to prioritize non-survey options. So this is where we heard a little bit about some of the things that maybe are already funded or there's other reasons why they can't be funded by ARPA. But extend senior center hours, build a park and improve and maintain safety paths in winter. So these are just some ideas on how we might answer some of the questions that, for me, like thinking about how do we better communicate what our summer initiatives are or what are some of the things that we'd like to do, but maybe we can't for some reason. And I will say that I think that just by presenting a survey like this and asking, starting to ask residents in some way, what are your thoughts on ARPA? That then they think, oh, maybe they are interested in hearing from me. And so I did get a, I know that various board members and Danny gets all kinds of emails from residents all the time. And I ended up talking to someone as a result of the survey. And she wanted to talk about, she was concerned about when the power went out. She was without power for about 10 days and power lines were down in her neighborhood. And she wanted to talk to me about the amazing response of our fire department. And her concern was that they didn't know where, they would be unable to find the fire hydrants. And could we put reflective tape on all the fire hydrants? And she noticed that some of the fire hydrants had been painted and some hadn't. And so I had, ended up having really great conversation with our assistant fire chief today where I got a lot of those answers. So now I can follow up with her. And really what she's worried about is that when the power goes out and there's not lights in the neighborhood, can the fire department find the fire, the hydrant in order to put out a fire? And so that was really her concern. It wasn't so much the tape. And now I know all about the BRICS system and I can talk to her about that, which, for those of you who don't know what a BRICS system is, it's an app on the phone which identifies every single fire hydrant. And then when they get a call, they are alerted to where the fire is and they can look on their app and it tells them where the closest hydrant is to where they're going. So I thought it was a successful effort. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Carrie?
Thanks for your help with the survey.
Just have one, Danny. So you sent roughly 45, there were roughly 45 was the population, 4,500?
4,800 is the list that we have.
And then you received 409 responses.
Yes.
How would you deem that? How would you deem that in terms of percentage as--
Like statistically--
Statistically, I would think that that's actually a pretty good response from 4,500 people.
It feels like it is, but I have no other data to support an opinion. So it, like, I think it's good.
I think it's pretty good.
We'll see next time.
The good thing is we got a survey out.
We got a survey out.
We have a starting point for future ones.
Yep, and we're increasing the list as well.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was a pretty good start.
What else do we want to ask them, right?
Right. And it gets to the point where now you're finding different systems. We've tried different ones where you're kind of finding, what is the best system? How do we get it out there? How do we evaluate? So each one will get stronger and better. It's definitely helping having communications director here to help us actually get to the community to find out more stuff.
One of the items that wasn't on the survey, I just want to make sure, is the Chapter 20 drain study. Was that on the survey? That was not, was it? Okay, we'll talk about that in a minute, but okay.
Did you get any feedback from people? If people, the way the wording of the options were, that fire station number three, create multiple changing areas, all that kind of stuff? Was it clear to people that we were just talking about the design? Or they think they were getting the whole project?
I'm sure that they, well, I can't say for sure, but I would believe that they would not think they were getting the whole project.
I dig at emails that people thought it was a misprint. They were like, "There is no way you're getting it." And I said, "No, to apply for grants, you have to have shovel-ready plans." So for example, another community through these community, you know, they used to be called earmarks, now they're called community funding projects. But another community just got a $9 million approval for their fire station, where we all used to have to bond it or tax for it. So now that we can apply, we needed this. And so I have had multiple conversations with people that wrote in saying, "There's no way." "Did you mean 20 million?" And I said, "No, that's so that we can apply for the grants. It's how we can get in." So people definitely noticed the number. But I think the ones that I did, they didn't think that that was the actual cost of a brand-new facility. You can't build a house for 20.
But there were no responses within the survey related to that question.
Well, hopefully we get the availability of the e-news and that keeps growing. Because I know, excuse me, I know I shared it with, you know, my HOA president, and they were like, a few years ago, and they were like, "What? Oh, this is the greatest." So then they shared it with our 60 residents. And so if we keep doing, and that's probably where you got your 40 responses. But, you know, if they keep, people keep spreading this information, it's very helpful and it'll grow those numbers. And if people say, "Well, I want to participate. I didn't know about a survey," get the e-news. And it's, you know, I like getting the e-news. And it's not like I don't get other stuff from you guys already anyways, but I still enjoy getting the e-news.
And soon, an app, I promise.
Yes, the app is coming very soon.
App is coming.
That'll make it a lot easier, even not just to be able to do surveys, but also for if somebody's on the safety path, they see a downed tree, they take a picture, send it through the app. So it'll really speed up services. So that'll be great, too. Yeah. Does anybody have any other questions for Carrie before we go into our discussions?
Off the top of my head.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie.
So next, just because we're not able to talk to each other outside of board meetings, this would be just to discuss, I know Clerk Brook had mentioned possibly ranking items. Others have said just, do we go forward with all? If, in a perfect world, all these estimates are correct, there is a chance that we can make all of the people who, no matter where they ranked them, we could fund them. The danger is, what do we do if some of these come in much higher than what we've estimated? So as a board, are you looking to rank these so you let us know which ones? Because we have to write RFPs for a lot of these and basically looking for guidance. Are you interested in ranking these so that you can tell us, "Hey, we want these first based on either what the people said," or if you don't want some of these? Or do you want to just have us kind of go at all of them all at once? Just kind of looking for some guidance on there. Because realistically, there is going to be some limitations on the fact that quite a few of us are involved in all of these. So the same people will be writing a lot of these RFPs. So they can't all be written the same day. And then to Brian's point, some weren't included on there. If you want to talk about the HRC wasn't capable of, they didn't have the ability to take on this project in the timing of ARPA. But I don't know if you want to start with that discussion?
Yeah, just to, I guess to throw that on. Because you know, overall, Jason prepared just an overall recap, where the ARPA money is basically 4.4 million. All of these needs tallied up excluding Chapter 20 drain, which doesn't have a dollar amount. Depending on which option for the phone system is either 3.8 or 4.2, which means that we could approve all of these, move forward with them, and we still potentially could have a balance left over. So I guess my concern is that we don't have a Chapter 20 drain study in here. It is a significant concern for residents that are getting flooded out in increasing what occurs to be significantly more and more significant rain events. From my understanding, HRC doesn't have the capability of performing the survey at this point, which--
They have the capability, but you have to book certain, I mean, just like our projects are booked out a couple of years in, they already have projects for--
They don't have the staffing to be able to do it now.
So there's no waiting staff waiting for projects, is how it should be raised, really. They have the capability, just not in our--
I meant in terms of, and I guess the concern is that the need isn't going away. And it's not going to go away, you know, sooner or later, either we have to deal with this, or residents are going to have to continue putting up with being, with having flooding situations occur. It, you know, it seems like this really came up significantly in the summer of '21 when we had significant rains. Last year, it wasn't as much of an issue. But there are certain areas that we get rain and we get flooding. So I'm just, I guess cautioning and alerting the board to this, that, you know, maybe we look to others, perhaps. I'm not necessarily suggesting that. But we have a need and we have, I guess we have to figure out how to satisfy the need if it's something that we want to do. So I just thought that might be worthy of discussion.
One thing we could do, even though it's not ARPA-related, is each year we take on like a large project. This year, it's going to be the strategic plan and some others. So each year, there is a kind of, what we've determined is, how do we help figure things out? This could be the next year where we know, and it gives engineering firms a chance to know it's coming, to bid on it. Because I would be nervous what engineering firm does have, just a bunch of engineers sitting around with time on their hands with all the projects that are now coming. But this could be something, I think we all agreed that we wanted it. It was that, to find a firm to do it. This could be the next ones, you know, the strategic plan will be done, this becomes the next big project. So we could look at it, just putting it into our regular budget for the next budget instead of waiting for grants or waiting for something like that. That could be an option.
Well, I think it's a good option. I mean, because again, it's not going away.
Gives them a chance to get their engineers ready for us, too.
It gives us an ability to kind of get on their list as this is something that we're looking, whether it's next year or the year after, at least we have, at least we're on, you know, the queue and we're in line. And part of it is, I don't know that we nor they even know what the number is.
Right.
And that's a problem. So even just getting to an estimate. And, you know, the other problem is, I think five or so areas have been, don't hold me to that number, but have been identified. The question is, are there more? And then if we're either going to study those five areas, or we look at the entire township, because maybe we don't know everyone that's complaining, or that has an issue, only those may be the areas that are complaining that we have an issue. So I, again, I just want to keep it on our radar, because I think as time goes on, the issue is just going to flood us with responses.
Oh, Lord.
Very good.
And I think you're right that it, we were, I think at the study session, the five of us were there, and everybody also agreed that this was important, and that we were actually interested in possibly going to that larger scope of, how much would it be to just look at the town? Because so much has changed, too. Those five sections are older now, where those are out of date. So it would be better to look at the township as a whole and say, it all flows into each other, what drainage areas can we affect first?
Right, right.
So at least that's what I think I remember from that study session, was it was well-received and we wanted it.
Okay, good.
But our scope might be bigger than what ARPA could handle, so it might be a regular budget item.
And I think it's really a good way of handling it, especially if they don't have the staffing to take care of it right now. As you mentioned, just notifying it's something that we're considering strongly in the next year or so. There's strong board support for, more importantly, there's a need to really look at that. And it is only going to get worse within the township. We have so many residents who are impacted by it. So I think it's really a good way of strategically of taking care of that.
Yeah.
I want to echo that, too. I mean, the sooner we can work on it, the better. I mean, I would really love to see it sooner. But there are practicalities of every situation that we have to deal with. But the other thing, too, I also completely agree with regarding the township-wide issue, because these rain events are just going to become more and more frequent, they're going to become more severe. And not only are we, well, that's happening. At the same time, our stormwater systems are aging. You know, my community has an aging stormwater system. Most neighborhoods also have an aging stormwater system. Drainage ditches are not draining as well as they were. It doesn't really show up in most days, but it really showed up that last June, two years ago, and it's going to show up again. So this is an important service, I think, that we're providing. We're not fixing anyone's drains, but we're providing the data so that people know what to expect in the future as rains become more serious, that they should pay attention to it themselves. It's a service to help, you know, folks know what, you know, what to be aware of, you know, if additional rain events come along. So it wasn't in the study, and it has its own priorities sort of outside of that, but you know, so. As far as ranking, you know, my thought would be that, you know, that the survey gave us a good guidance as to where to focus first, and do that, and then go from there. I mean--
And many of them mirror what the board had ranked them previously as far as importance.
That was interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really nice to see that mirror.
I mean, but, I mean, by my math, we can do all of them.
Yep.
That's what we're saying. As long as the estimates all come in--
Yeah.
--there should be any trouble. It's, what do we do if the estimates come in much higher? Is there, do you want to follow? Again, it does seem like the community mirrored the same ideas we have. Do we want to just follow the ranking of this? Or is there something that you wanted to talk about that would cause that to change? Just because this is the only time I can really ask for guidance, is when we're all together publicly.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my feeling is that I would put the security improvements ahead of the record management. But other than that, I pretty much agree with the order.
But, you know, I agree with, however, based on costs, and we won't know until we get the actual, you know, the actual cost on it. But I would say that we try and do all of them. And if in fact, it's more expensive than what we have, then at that point, we can just prioritize. And I think we already know what the most important ones are on the board. If, as we've discussed, it has to do with getting the plans for fire station three, for the police department, security, records. I mean, I think it's important that we upgrade it in here and also have security in here, upgrades in here, which are very important.
Yeah, the first thing I did when I saw it is I started like adding it all up, like, can we, how much of this can we afford? You know, it's like, it didn't seem like it was going over the top, you know, like, is this too much? We can, if we can afford it all, and maybe, like you said, it takes time, but start at the top with a top priority and just work your way down. And if you get to a point where you get three quarters of the way through the list and it's not looking good, then we have to talk about it. But I would say it was a great direction. I was really pleased with the responses.
Great. Anyone else have anything to add?
I think there's one item here, and that's the telephone, where there's really two options.
Okay.
And I think we're going to need to have, decisions need to be made in terms of whether we're hosting it or someone else is hosting. And I would think that that's probably something that would entail some IT input. It also may entail having a discussion with the board in terms of security, depending on what the IT, you know, the rationale for the discussion or the decision. And that may, quite frankly, I could entail a closed session of the board to talk about security that may not be so public. So I guess, while I would move, while I think it's prudent to move forward in all of them, that's really the one item that I think we're going to need to have some more dialogue, you know, with IT to be able to get a sense of which one of those do we want to do.
And they'll hopefully have some information to bring back soon. The conversations have already started with other cities, villages, and townships of, what are you using? Who most recently changed? So gathering that data is going on right now.
Good.
So that hopefully we'll have something to bring back. And I'm sure IT is doing some of theirs as well.
Okay.
We're kind of doing it where I'll ask administrations of, "What do you have?", and then they ask their peers so that we can kind of grab different ideas together. And then come back and find out what would be best for people to look at.
So I'm going to make a motion, and people can chime in, trying to, hearing what everyone says, is make a motion, I'm making a motion, to move forward on providing RFPs for all of these items. The IT is going to need to be determined by this board as to which direction.
The phones, you mean?
I mean, I'm sorry, the phones, as to which direction. At working with, and maybe to have a report back to the board from the supervisor in 90 days as to what the status of these RFPs are.
Hopefully some will be coming for vote before that.
Well, you know--
Because some of them won't be that hard.
Exactly.
They're pretty simple, that we could put out there, vet them, take them in, and come to you quickly.
I guess I'm just--
Since we've taken so much time to already prepare, yeah.
I'm not looking at a long game. I just want, in case there's something that's really problematic--
Yes, yeah, yeah.
--then at least we're going to have that as a reporting mechanism. Some of these may come back the next board meeting or two board meetings as to, we're ready to go forward with an RFP. Or actually, they won't need--
No, if you're willing to give me the ability to go to RFPs with this, then we can start writing RFPs, putting them out, and we'd be coming back to you with who bid, how much was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. If you're willing to go with that, then that'll speed up the process where we can.
If you're finished with your motion--
That's the motion.
I'll support it.
Motion to go forward--
The motion is to move forward with the RFP process for all of these items. The phone system specifically is going to need direction as to what, which system that we're going with.
So come back with that one.
So we want to come back with that one.
Yeah.
But the rest of these RFPs can be made. Period.
Okay.
As soon as possible.
And report back next--
Report back.
And at a minimum, report back in 90 days as to what the status of all of the RFPs are. But as these RFPs come in, clearly bring them to the board.
Great. All right, we have a motion by--
Support.
Support by trustee--
Got double support on this one.
Double support. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great, we can start moving forward. So next, we have considered adoption of ordinance 675, pergolas and fountain zoning ordinance amendment. And we have Director Patty Volker.
Well, good evening. So last month, I gave a pretty thorough presentation of the proposed ordinances regarding amending our zoning ordinance as it relates to patio elements and mechanical electrical equipment. And I'll just go through these briefly, because I know that we have this information as part of the packet. And also, this was provided in detail at last month's meeting. So just to refresh your memory, the department was asked to look at elements that go before the zoning board of appeals, maybe those that are more customarily approved, routinely approved with similar conditions, and then generate an ordinance amendment that would allow for those to become permitted by right, if you will, and not necessarily having to go to the zoning board of appeals. And then looking at our language a little bit more specifically to see if there's anything that needs to be cleared up. So in this instance, we look specifically at the area where in 2019, we established that within a patio or terrace that's immediately adjacent to a home, there's some elements that you can have as part of that, you know, that outdoor living space, as long as it was immediately adjacent to the home. And so we had things such as barbecue grills, kitchenettes, low walls, piers, and so forth. And so now we're adding to that list based on the action from the ZBA over the last several years. And so we found that, speaking specifically to that patio terrace area, that there are things such as pergolas, which are specifically not to exceed 14 feet in height. That's that threshold that we have as an accessory structure. And that, the pergola definition is very specific as it relates to having a slatted roof structure, not a solid roof, so a slatted roof. And so, you know, for example, you know, here, here would be one where this is a patio pergola. It's located immediately adjacent to the rear of the bill, of the home on a patio. Another is a patio fountain. Here's another element that has been routinely approved by the township. And these features are all which are, you know, within the patio area to the rear of the home, and also that, you know, there'd be some screening that would be part of the consideration. And that screening is actually part of the criteria found within the ordinance amendment. And so we also then built upon the illustrations that we have in our ordinance and added these two elements so that now we have illustrations that are depicting the intent of the language as well as the language itself. So here, the 7B is a reference to the section found in the township ordinance that's being proposed. So it's adding to that list, as I said. So now a fountain and a pergola shown in the rear yard is the example. Also, two different perspectives, because also the ordinance does speak to a projection, patio projection in the front yard. You know, sometimes there is a patio or entranceway where there's some masonry or low walls. Well, the thought is that, you know, here's another example where even within that patio area, there could be something that more specifically could be improved upon. We're really focusing, though, in the rear yard and talking about that lower right illustration. Again, a different perspective, now showing actually a double frontage, so it's a corner lot, and still being able to, in a rear yard, have that pergola and that fountain and found within the ordinance provisions. Those criteria, which are going to be consistent, shown in the language, is that the pergola needs to be adjacent to the residence in the rear yard, and that patio is immediately adjacent to the residence, that there, the park, the setbacks of 16 feet be provided. So here's an example that is showing in that blue box where a pergola would be located to the rear yard, and there'd be evergreen screening. You know, much of the, the discussion of these patio elements are those that are immediately adjacent to the home, that don't have any negative impact to adjacent neighbors. And then with the patio fountain, here's an example where the fountain is, is being shown on a patio that's immediately adjacent to a home. It's being compliant with the setbacks, and there is evergreen screening that would be shown. The other provision that is under consideration tonight is Ordinance 676. So if I can lump them both in to one presentation. This ordinance is seeking to address ground mounted mechanicals and electrical equipment, where we are taking it away from our accessory structures provision.
Yeah, we should be doing these separate, because they're separate motions.
Oh, that'd be fine. I was just trying to give you my presentation.
Okay. We can do the presentation together, but we'll still have to do two separate motions.
Perfectly fine.
Okay.
Perfectly fine. So the accessory structure ordinance provisions require that accessory structures have to go before the zoning board of appeals under nearly all conditions. We were presenting a way in which we can have these ground mounted mechanicals comply with standards that have been routinely approved by the ZBA, but put it under a section of our zoning ordinance under the site standards, thereby if the units are compliant, then the next step would going before the, would be to apply for a building permit and, as opposed to having to go to the zoning board of appeals first. So there was, you'll see in the amendment that we are actually taking the existing language and actually putting it into another section of the zoning ordinance. But with specific to the changes of the residential, residential units, such as, you know, AC units or generators, that as we did a study of the past actions by the ZBA, as well as some of our surrounding communities, that there's been some relaxation of where those AC units can be located. And so we found with the consistency from our, our own ZBA, that to allow that equipment to project up to six feet in that required 16-foot setback, that result is a 10-foot greenbelt that still allows for vegetative screening or not, or existing screening, depending on the circumstance, and thereby not necessarily requiring that applicant or that homeowner to have to go to the ZBA, as long as they were compliant with that, that criteria. The other is that, in some cases, we have secondary frontages in the township where it's a corner lot or it's a through lot. And so to be able to still have that greenbelt and have that vegetation, we would allow that equipment to exceed, to go up to 10 feet into that required 40-foot setback, still then providing that 30-foot greenbelt and not necessarily having to then go to the zoning board of appeals for that, that circumstance of having two frontages. And again, even in that example, evergreen plantings would be a requirement as part of the review and approval prior to permitting. There is also a section of, for non-residential districts, which I'll say, commercial applications, wanting to make sure that equipment generally is, is in the rear yard placement on that commercial site, adjacent to the building, and allowing those units then to be screened appropriately, depending on the materials or screen wall or plantings, but that be adjacent to the building. There are some instances where, because of the size of the commercial lot, it can be allowed in the side yard. That existing language is being forwarded and continued on in this new amendment. But the whole point is of allowing for that equipment to be adjacent to the building and not necessarily located within a parking field. We do call out compliance with the minimum decibel requirements of not exceeding 70 DBA. This actually is a, our current regulation that's found in Chapter 14. It's important to add this as a note so that as someone is reading our ordinance, they have a point of reference here, but also it's found in also in Chapter 14, and that is not changing as far as that threshold. And then lastly, placement is subject to compliance with building code requirements. As, as an applicant is submitting for a permit, it'll be necessary to meet all the necessary building codes, but also any of the manufacturer's specifications as well. So that's the underlying requirement as well, that our plan reviewers would be reviewing as part of the, in addition to the zoning ordinance requirements. So we, too, wanted to show this through illustrations, and we updated our illustrations from those that we presently have to something a little bit more contemporary by indicating under plan review, here's an example where on the right side of the screen, you see a row of, of evergreens. It's a, it's a secondary frontage. It's depicting that there is a, a minimum front yard setback, allowing for that unit to encroach 10 feet into that required 40-foot setback. And then on the left side is the example where now you have an interior lot line. It's a side yard, the maximum, excuse me, the minimum requirement in that instance would be 10 feet within that 16 feet required side setback, and then allowing for a evergreen screening in that example. And then the lower to the right is matched material of the, the residence itself, and just depicting from a perspective view what that screening would look like in the placement of it. The evergreen screening, we're allowing to extend, to extend into that 10-foot greenbelt, because that's the whole spirit of wanting to have that vegetation in that 10 feet. However, if it was a, some sort of a fence or a masonry wall matching the home, then that would have to be no greater than that 10-foot dimension. So here's an example of a corner lot, where the blue box is depicting a generator. It's, it's falling within the front setback. There is 30 feet between the property line and the, the unit itself, so it complies with that, that setback. And it's, it's located in that, that secondary front yard, and there's evergreen screening. So this would, this person could apply for a permit, and, and with compliant with the building codes and the manufacturer specifications, a permit could be issued. Excuse me. The other component of the mechanical and electrical equipment is something new that's, that we have been presented with, and these are these wall-mounted units. We don't have any ordinance provisions that really speak to wall-mounted units, and we found that as they're becoming a little bit more popular, they're called mini splits for those who might have been interested in following up on, you know, what really they, they look like. And in this instance, we were looking at allowing them to be in the side rear or secondary frontage, but making sure that they're obscured from public view, because it is a mechanical equipment. And in a commercial application, it would be the same thing. As long as it was screened from public view, then it would be, you know, permitted and be part of the review process. Replicating what we did for the ground mounted mechanicals, that the, the minimum decibel requirements would be duly noted within this section of our ordinance amendment, and then also commenting on that, again, they'd have to comply with the building codes and the manufacturer specs. So here's an example of a residential wall unit that actually came into the township. And, you know, so it's depicting what side of the home the unit is intending. It's depicting it's 31 feet from the side lot line, so clearly not in, not an issue as far as setbacks, and it's evergreen screening. And here's a example of those wall mounts. This will tend to, in, in many applications, that the units themselves will be lowerly mounted, because they'd have to be screened. So that might result in maybe some placement a little bit lower for, for evergreen screening to be a little more effective in some locations and, and applications. And I think that is it.
Anyone have any questions? Sorry, I'm going to walk. Sorry. Got my, got it. I have more time. Does anyone have questions first about going back to the adoption of 675? So about the pergolas and fountains?
Be happy to make a motion on the adoption of Ordinance 675, Pergolas and Fountain Zoning Ordinance Amendment.
Motion by trustee.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. So now we'll go on to the adoption of Ordinance 676 for mechanical and electrical equipment. Are there any questions on that? I look for a motion then.
Make a motion.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You might as well stay up there, because now we have your annual report.
Aye. And it's always a pleasure to, to present the planning, building, and ordinance department's annual reports. In your packet, you received all three of those documents, and they also have been posted to the township website. As a part of this presentation, I, I want to make sure that I do comment on the fact that the planning commission bylaws are required to prepare a annual report to the township board, so that is part of their obligation to present that to you. So at their February 20th meeting, the planning commission was animously supportive to accept and forward this 2022 annual report to the township board. And since then, we have been expanding our annual reports to include our building division and ordinance division, so you have all three as part of our reporting this evening. But I do want to take a minute to extend special thanks to Kelly Jacobson and Sharon Van Horn. These are reports that literally start, you know, January 1, when they are putting together these, these reports because of the, the documentation and the information that we're, we're trying to, you know, present to, to the township board, and they do an outstanding job, so I want to at least share that with you. So if I could just highlight that there's a lot of information here, and I'm sure you don't want me to read all three documents, but the planning highlights, let's start there. The planning commer, and there's no need to really highlight, yes, the, the report, the planning highlights. So the commercial planning commission applications are rebounding. We had a little bit of a slow return because of all that took place regarding COVID and also the market forces that were playing a major part. So we're now seeing an increase in activity, and now we're hitting kind of the levels of what we've had in, you know, prior to that time. But we, what we're really seeing in sharp contrast to that is our design review board and our zoning board of appeals applications. The design review board had a 44% increase over last year, and the ZBA had a 68% increase over last year. So they're catching up with each other, I guess, if you will. And even our commercial improvements and signage permits have exceeded last year. So the activity level is starting to come up to maybe more of a, what we would deem as a little bit more normal activity. And I guess another shout out is that we have amazing residential volunteers that man our, or sit on our planning commission, our zoning board of appeals, and so, you know, we always want to acknowledge that those are terrific residents to work with, and they are very appreciative of and responsive to any of the information that we provide them. So thank you to the planning commission and ZBA. The building highlights, so the 2022 overall steady totals over last year, the residential permits were fairly consistent from last year, again, kind of catching up to what was occurring over a period of a year and a half. And the commercial permits are slightly slower. So I think that's, again, as the, some of those commercial projects were on hold for a period of time, they're a little bit slower than catching up with that permitting process, because we have several projects that right now are in the planning stages that haven't even gone before the planning commission yet, because they're still finalizing documentation to be presented to you ultimately. So I would, I'm hoping that we're going to see that increase over the next year. The building division continues to serve the city of Sylvan Lake as part of our contract services with them, and they experienced a 56% increase over last year. And to, to reflect the activity level that we have within the department and trying to manage that work level and that, and that, and that permit level and processing, our online per, payment for permits and our online applications for many of our permit types has facilitated the processing of these permits much more effectively and efficiently. And we're going to continue to use our software to the extent that we, we can to that point. And we're seeing some, you know, positive results out of that as well, and good feedback. And then lastly, our ordinance highlights, there's a number of properties maintained by the township, and that has increased 80% over last year. If you recall, their, their, the township does have provisions where if someone doesn't maintain their property as far as, you know, grass, that the township will then call out a contractor to cut the grass at, at the cost expense to the property owner. And generally, that over, that balances out after a couple notices, you know, that they have to incur that cost. But it seems like over the year, we've had, actually had an increase from last year, and pretty significant, too. The signage and property maintenance violations probably account for the largest segment of the inspections that the, that they are, code and ordinance officers perform over the year. And on top of that, it's also the ZBA follow-up. As, as many of you know, if there's any action that the zoning board of appeals takes on a, a request that come before them, there's conditions that are imposed. It's the ordinance officers that are following up to make sure that those conditions as part of the ZBA are being enforced. So, you know, they, they reflect on, you know, our activity level at the ZBA. Well, that means that their activity level to that follow-up has been increasing as well. And then lastly, when enforcement action is not successful, and we certainly, you know, try all of our means to be able to communicate for a positive outcome if there's violations, that in some cases, a civil infraction tickets have to be issued. And over last year, we had 11 civil infraction tickets, which is slightly up from the previous years. So that's quite the, the brief highlight, but certainly there's a lot of reading if you, you care to read through all of the reports, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Patty?
I'll just say, as a member of the zoning board of appeals, I know how hard Director Volker and her staff work, so just thank you for everything that you do for the township.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to the staff.
Thank you.
They've played a wonderful.
And thank also them for putting together great reports, as they do every year. And each year, it seems to get a little more involved and in-depth as far as all the activity that you're across at the three departments.
Thank you. I'll pass it to you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So next, we have considering approval of resolutions for street lighting assessment districts presented by Clerk.
That's me. We have three separate motions here. There are three special assessment districts for lighting that are in the township. These are areas where the community agreed to install and pay for lighting. They are the Carillion Hills, SAD 394, Chestnut Run, SAD 295, and Nob Hill, SAD 246. A map, actually, of the, of the residential communities were, was contained in the packet. Also, the proposed assessment role and a motion. And when I request. And when I request, if you've got any questions, let me know, and otherwise, we could just go through each one of these one at a time. This is, by the way, the, the routine timing, this item appears on our agenda. Sometimes it's the first meeting in May, but we're just a little ahead of the schedule here. And the bills go out the first of June, and payments are expected back in the, the first of July.
Does anyone have any general questions about the process? If not, we'll go through each one. All right. I'm going to go first to Caroline Hills.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Schostak.
Support.
Support by Treasurer Keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes. Next, we'll go to Chestnut Run.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, and next we'll go to Nob Hill.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Ficki.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. That was a fast presentation. Next, we have payroll and vouchers. We've all had a chance to look at the ones from April 24th, unless there's any changes, I would look for a motion.
So moved. Support.
Motion by trustee Murray. Support by trustee Ficki. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And next is motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki and Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see everybody back in two weeks.